Citizens Communication, the Board of Alderman welcomes comments from citizens on issues and items of concern not on the agenda. Those waiting to speak must sign in before the meeting begins and observe a three-minute time limit when addressing the board. Speakers will have one opportunity to speak during this time period. Speakers desiring to speak on an agenda item will be allowed to speak when the agenda item is called. Inquiries about matters not listed on the agenda will either be directed to staff or placed on a future agenda for Alderman consideration. The first person that is speaking, Linda Reynolds. Please come forward, your name and where you live.
Linda Reynolds, 507 Santa Rosa. Thank you, Board, for letting us communicate with you. There are over 300 acres of undeveloped land in the village of Salado. At one time, at least the wildfire arena generated taxes, and now we receive little benefit from the sanctuary 300-plus acres. We have actually lost tax dollars bringing that land into the village. Please think long and hard before bringing more empty land into the village without some financial prepayment from any developer for sewer lines and tax abatement deals. It has been over a month since the sanctuary was to break ground, and no announcements of a new date. If we ever hope to remove the yoke of the new wastewater treatment plant maintenance and operation costs, let alone the debt, from taxpayers who do not receive any sewer services, someone on this dais must contact Mr. Hanks Jr. and Mr. Sylaski and remind them that promises were made and agreements were signed in good faith. Do they care about the village? Do they even ever plan to actually invest in our future, or were they just trying to make a profit without any investment? Do they care if our main street continues to suffer? Do they care if businesses close or move to Georgetown? Please help the village taxpayers, who must manage their own septic systems, and think long and hard before bringing any more empty land into the village. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person to speak is Mr. Will Lowry.
Hello, I'm Will Lowry, 1799 Mill Creek Drive. I simply wanted to publicly thank each of you for the actions that you chose to take during the last meeting. I believe everyone who got up and spoke spoke as sincerely as I have ever seen comments made up here, and it felt as though those concerns were listened to. And so, thank you.
Thank you, Will. Those are the only two sheets of paper that I have, so we will go. Ma'am?
May I be?
Did you give a sheet of paper?
No, I did not.
I'm going to allow you to do that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, I'm Darlene Walsh at 1001 Mill Creek Drive. I wasn't planning to say anything because I thought a gentleman that I met today would show up and present his case to you, but he isn't here, so I'm going to try and present it for him, because it shook me up talking to him today. I met him at a, I just met him by chance today, and he was close to tears. He lives on West Village Road. He initially was told his impact fee would be $37.50, and then, once the water usage was looked at, he said he was told, no, because you have an irrigation, some sort of irrigation system, it would be over $6,500, I believe. And, and, and he's a, he's a, he's a self-employed lawn worker. He does lawn work here in town. His wife helps handicap children at the school, in the school district. Not a teacher, she's a teacher's aide. And so, they live paycheck to paycheck. And he had already figured out at $5,000 a day, which I understand you're going to, you're perhaps going to eliminate that, or that, that burden on people tonight, but he had already figured out at $5,000 a day, how much, like $60-some thousand, he said he'd owed, and he was, he has been going around from bank to bank trying to borrow money to pay that debt. And, and he, and he's just, he's, he was, he shook me up today. He really did. It was terrifying. And I tried to ensure him, assure him that you all had decided to eliminate that $5,000 penalty today, and you had eliminated, you were going to eliminate the impact fee. Please show up tonight and express your concerns to, to the board. I encourage you to show up. I think he's a little shy and proud. And so, I, I also said to him, I believe that you, that the board will be working in a workshop on hardship cases. And I think you're definitely a hardship case. You know, I know you've got a lot of pride, but this, you need to explain why you need help to even get connected, because he said he doesn't have the money to get connected. And he just doesn't. And so, I would encourage you tonight, in your workshop, that you would think about people like him, because he's afraid he and his family are going to have no place to live soon, if he doesn't get some help to get connected. And that's just all I wanted to say about it. Thank you.
Consent Agenda Number Two. A, B, and C. A, approval of minutes of the regular Board of Alderman meeting of October 3, 2019. B, approval of September 2019 financial statements for the village of Salado. And C, approval of a donation by Richard Shields with action pooing of one floor jack, two tough-style boxes, and six full-way lug wrenches to the village of Salado Police Department. I'll entertain a motion, please. Sir, second?
Second.
Most of the bid made and seconded. Discussion?
Question.
Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand. Pose likewise. Passes. Don't administrators report.
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the Board, members of the public. Let me run through several items. First of all, let's get an update on the wastewater project. Connection activity has slowed with the discussions regarding impact fees. To date, about 50 percent of the properties have connected or are in the process of connecting to the wastewater system. As we explained at the last meeting, what that means is, some have paid their impact fees or fully connected, some have paid their impact fees but are not yet connected, and some are in discussions with the city right now about the process of getting connected in their impact fees. So, there's still strong interest and still movement, but it has slowed down a little bit with the discussion regarding the impact fees. The duplex grinder pumps that were on backorder for those restaurants and larger mixed-use properties on the east side of Main Street, they have arrived, which is good news, and they're now in the process of being installed at a number of those locations. Legal counsel is in the process of drafting the sewer line extension agreement for that 54-acre development planned at the northeast corner of the intersection of Royal and Smith Ranch Road. That's Mr. Rosemont's development. And the air filters at the lift stations that we've installed, they've largely reduced the odor issues. We're still getting a few complaints, though, and we're looking at those, we think there may be some splashing issues that are generating some odor, but we're going to continue to monitor and continue to try, try to address those issues. Status report on the Pace Park Improvement Project. Work continues to address safety concerns at Pace Park. As far as the playground goes, we've removed the broken spring horse, and we've also started action and taken other steps relating to adding safety signs, removing tripping hazards, and painting wood supports. No need to close the park at this time, according to our inspectors, who've looked at it. We're in the process of talking to Parks and Wildlife about their next break window to possibly secure some funding for the replacement of the playground with either another playground or maybe another recreational facility, and mowing is underway on the lower end of the park. We've been doing some shredding work. Status report on tree trimming project. As you know, in this budget you just approved, we've included a pretty significant chunk of change to go towards tree trimming, as we've done the last couple of years. We're in the process of preparing this year's list of locations where the tree canopy over the right-of-way needs to be raised. At least one contractor will be used to address identified problems areas we may use to, depending on the length of that list. The contractor will be working with property owners when and if issues arise. We're not trimming trees on private property. We're only trimming those trees that, that have the canopy issue over the right-of-way and mainly the roadway itself. The scope of work will include raising the canopy over the roadway anywhere from 15 to 17 feet, which is the standard. The work will be done prior to February 20 to minimize the risk of the spread of oak wood.
Can I ask a question on that real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
Tree trimming, didn't we just do that?
It's an ongoing process. It literally is an annual effort. We've got some of the areas we trimmed a year and a half ago that we've got regrowth on.
So, they don't go to all areas every year? They just do like certain roads?
Target, our problem areas, yeah. We don't have that type of money to literally go citywide in one year. We break it up, and it probably will take a cycle of about three years to get through the entire city as far as hitting the major streets. Stats report on annexation, Drake Land Development LLC. As you know, it's petitioned to annex the Rosemont Development 54-acre tract into the village. The date for the required public hearing has been moved forward a little bit, or should I say moved back, I guess, or it's rescheduled to allow a little bit additional time for notice. The property owner has signed off on a future service plan for the area to be annexed. Required approval, or should I say, required provider notices will be mailed next week. Notice of the new date for the proposed annexation public hearing will be published next week in the newspaper. That new date is going to be November 7, which is your regular board meeting at 6:30, and of course, at the conclusion of that hearing, you then will consider the annexation ordinance to bring that property formally into the village. We're working to try to get the extension agreement in place and agreed to by all parties to the point that we can put that on the same agenda and try to jumpstart that process as the developers anxious and moving forward. Stats report on sales tax collections. The October 2019 sales tax check representing August 19 sales totaled some $37,225. When you look at the check itself and you compare it to the last October's check, it actually was down about 8 percent. But you, as we've talked before, you've got to look deeper into these numbers, because there are several components that go into that one check. There are audit adjustments that periodically get made by the state as they go through and complete their audits on various businesses. When you look at the check and you drill down and look at the actual collections for the month of August in this area, our collections were actually up. There was a significant audit adjustment that was made in last October's check to the tune of about $6,000, if I'm not mistaken. And when you, when you pull all of that stray data that goes into that check out and look at the actual revenue generated and collected, we were 6 percent higher than last October. Keep in mind, October is typically one of our lower, slower times for sales tax in the village. This year to date, since this is the first month of the fiscal year, sales tax collections represent about 9 percent of our budget at the 8 percent mark in the year. Couple of miscellaneous matters we want to touch on. Crews have started milling operations on Main Street in preparation for the installation of sidewalks. So, if you go down Main Street now and you look and see what they did, they made significant progress today despite a few blips and disturbances with the, with motors and parkers, but they got through it. But they're actually cutting out the path of the sidewalks that are going to be installed in the coming weeks. They're taking advantage of this time to try to double up so they can stay on schedule. Their goal at this stage of the game continues to be to get done with the area from basically the bridge down to College Hill, that area on, in that Royal, what we call the Royal Street intersection. Their hope is to have all the sidewalks in place there, and they've got all the drainage in place, and maybe even have some lights up in time for stroll. Certainly in December is their goal, but they're trying to get it done in early December if at all possible. And then, of course, the focus from then on out will be working their way up Main Street. They're not going to come in and put the final surface overlay down until the entire project is done, but they're on schedule at this point. Preparations continue for strolls. Speaking of which, mark these dates on your calendar. The mayor, we need to figure out what you all want to do. Thursday, December 5, which is your regular first December meeting for the Board, is actually the night of the stroll parade, so we need to decide how we want to address that. I think in years past, we just met early. It was typically a light agenda, and then went over and did the parade. And, but that's something you all need to let us know, how do you like to proceed with that? So, Thursday, December 5 is the parade, and of course, the stroll dates are December 6 and 7, and December 13 and 14. The contractor will not be working on that Friday of stroll week, on either of the Fridays of stroll week. So, they'll work Monday through Thursday, and on the parade day, they're actually going to cut off about 3 o'clock and get out of the way so they're not in the way of the parade. Finally, I want to let you know that we met this week with representatives of the groundwater district, Texas Parks and Wildlife, the village, and we're in the process of scheduling a meeting to try to bring property owners on the Salado Creek together, to try to clear up some misunderstandings that may exist relating to what type of work can be done in the stream and what type of work can be done adjacent to the stream. As you know, we're in an environmentally sensitive area, so we've got some federal regulations we need to adhere to, in addition to Parks and Wildlife regulations, in addition to the city's floodplain regulations. So, you really have three or four sets of regulations that govern this particular area, and I think there may be some confusion, totally innocent confusion, you know, among people on this, and I think our thought process is try to get everybody together and start the process of educating folks to let them know exactly what can be done. We're not going to sit there and say, you can't do this. We're going to tell you how you can do what you want to do, and you have to go through a permitting process and review process, in particular with the state, you know, to get through where we're going as far as some of this, some of this work that's taking place in and around the creek. So, we'll be having that meeting. We're in the process of preparing it. We're planning that meeting in November, but state, federal, and local officials will be present at that particular meeting. Mayor, that's all I've got.
Very well done. To you who worked so hard in Christmas and October, and in the Serena Parade and event, thank you very much. It was well received, well organized, very professional. I have no earthly idea if money was made or how much money was made, but I do know this. You really made friendships with a lot of different people. As I went through it Saturday afternoon and talked to the vendors, not one of them, not one, had a complaint. Everyone was very satisfied with what they had. So, thank you very much. Number four, ordinances. Consider approval-
Excuse me. Your Honor, could I ask Donna a question?
Surely.
Donna, how is our Salado sign up there on I-35?
Those, those signs are alive and well, and in our, the target of our solar contractor is awaiting delivery of their equipment. It's been ordered, and we are hopeful that they're going to be out there in the next couple of weeks, that they get the work done.
So, hopefully by the stroll, we'll have the signs up?
That will be the goal.
Great.
If not Thanksgiving.
All right. Number four. Any other, anyone else want to ask Donna a question? Okay, number four, ordinances. Consider approval of first reading of an ordinance of the village of Salado, Texas, amending ordinance number 2018-12 regarding impact fees for wastewater improvements that are attributable to new development in the city's proposed wastewater impact fee service area, providing for an effective date, severity, repealer, and proper notice and meeting. Donna?
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the Board, per your direction, we have drafted two ordinances tonight. This is the first of two that relate to the action that you proposed regarding the impact fees. This particular ordinance itself, as you mentioned, does amend the impact fee ordinance, and it's attributable to new development and such. What it does is it, first of all, addresses the issue that impact fees would not be paid on existing development in the initial service area, and we're classifying that with existing development as of October 17, 2019. So, anything done after that particular date would require an impact fee, but anything prior to that would not require that. And we've also gone in, as your direction, and have proposed increasing the impact fee from $37.50 per LUE to $51.52 per LUE for new development. So, this is the first of two ordinances, Mayor, and this is for you for consideration.
Questions to Donna? Not discussion, but questions?
I have a question. The ones you've already paid the impact fees, what's the projected repayment amount?
Oh, you're $160,000, $170,000, something like that? You're nowhere near the $900,000 that you were on track to collect.
Okay. And is there going to be a schedule for that, or any kind of guidelines that we should think about, or is it-
If you do away with them, we'll simply go through a refunding process. We have, we have an accurate accounting of all those fees that they've paid that have been sitting in a bank account and have not been spent at this point.
Okay, thank you.
We would seek, this is a, this is an ordinance, and the other ordinance, both of those require two readings, okay? And so, your second reading will probably have a separate action on there, authorizing you and directing us to do the refund. That doesn't have to be in an ordinance form, that can be a straight action item.
I have two questions. The first one is, how will eliminating the impact fees for existing businesses and residences impact our current budget?
Well, the way, the way you approved the budget just a couple of weeks ago, you approved it with the intent of reducing the debt service portion of your tax rate, and you were going to do that by using a portion of those impact fees that had been collected, and basically applying that towards the debt service payment and reducing the amount of property taxes that would need to be raised to pay the debt service. The amount of impact fees that were going to be used were somewhere in the neighborhood of about $71,000, if I'm not mistaken. What you did was, we originally, as you know, when the, when the budget came forward, we're going to split that cost with the general fund. There was $30,000, I think, allocated in the general fund, and you decided to go ahead and spend that $30,000 that was allocated in the general fund and throw that towards roads, and then basically pay the full complement of debt service reduction out of those impact fees. So, if you do away with these tonight, then what we're going to need to do is we're going to need to either go into fund balance and find that $71,000 so you maintain your commitment, which you have plenty of money in your fund balance to do, but you don't want to make that a habit, you know, or number two, you go in and do a combination of budget cuts or full budget cuts in that $71 and don't even hit the fund balance. But it's going to have to come out of the general fund side of the equation, is the longest shot of it.
So, if we, so what I understand you're saying, if we get rid of the impact fees tonight, then we're just going to impact our budget this year for $71,000?
Right. But keep in mind, the long-term, the long-term discussion we had about debt service reduction was, this year was going to be the first of a regular habit of trying to keep that debt service rate down. So, that means each year, you're going to be looking for that $71,000, if not more, if you want to, if you want to reduce that rate even more. You're going to have to be looking for that from the general fund side if the impact fees aren't there. The thing to keep in mind about impact fees on new development versus the situation that we're dealing with existing development is, with the new development piece, there are some limitations, more limitations than on that first group that that would have applied, you know, because it typically goes towards the impact of that new development coming in. In this situation, the existing development was being interpreted as new development because it was new service units, so their impact fees could easily be applied towards debt service. It may not be the case necessarily with the new subdivisions coming in, that those impact fees need to go towards their impact on the system, not necessarily downtown's impact on the system.
Okay, my next question is, if we, if we keep the impact fees tonight, and the, the proposed lawsuit is filed against our, our village, what is our exposure on, on, lose, lose on both of that?
There's your question, it's loaded.
The numbers that we've heard in our executive session, are those publishable, or?
Well, typically, I don't want to talk about what we talked about in executive session, but the risk you face is this, and that is, you know, your attorneys gave you counsel as far as what the city's, you know, capabilities were, if we were to face a challenge on impact fees. If you hit a judge that said, the city should not be doing what they're doing as far as those impact fees on existing development, then, you know, sure, you refund the impact fees, but then you also face the risk of paying legal fees, you know, from that standpoint. You may not face the risk of paying legal fees, but you've got your own legal fees to pay, not just the other side's, but your own. So, at the end of the day, you're going to be out probably a pretty significant chunk of change when it comes to legal fees by fighting the case one way or the other.
And if we lose the case, then we'd be responsible for, we could be responsible for paying the attorney's fees?
Both sides, yes, sir. No guarantee, but you could be, absolutely.
Okay. So, my last question I have is, are we going to be able to make up the $71,000 that we're going to lose by taking out the impact fees with, by substantially increasing the impact fees for new businesses from $37.50 to $51.52?
Again, as I said, as I said a minute ago on that situation, Mike, is the fact that depending on that development, you may not be able to use those, those new development fees to go towards the initial debt service. It may be for future debt service, because it's new development. In this situation, their new development by our interpretation, but there's a question about that that's been raised, so, but answer the question is, I think you're more apt to try to make that money up from the general fund than you are from subdivisions coming in.
Okay.
I will say this, and that is, you do have the opportunity to bring that in from subdivisions coming in through the wastewater rates, and we talked a little bit about that publicly in our workshops, and that is the fact that as more customers come online to the system, typically, you could reduce the rates for customers, but we've talked about the idea of continuing to build on debt service reduction, and what you might be able to do is, instead of lowering the rates, you may be able to leave the rates the same, not raising them, not raising them, but leaving them the same, and taking the difference that you would normally reduce between what you would normally reduce to and where they're at right now, and allocating that money towards debt service reduction and make up some of that money. So, there are ways to do that. You just need to start getting those new customers on the system to the point where they start generating the additional revenue that could potentially ease the pain.
Thanks, Donna.
Sure.
Other questions, please? Hold and entertain a motion? Move, we adopt the first reading of this ordinance as presented. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion?
A question.
Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand. Pose likewise. And will we, can I ask you? We'll see the second reading of this at the next meeting.
November meeting, unless you want to call specialty.
Okay.
Sure choice. It'll be November 7. And again, there will be a companion item placed on the agenda to mandate us to refund.
Number B. Consider approval of first reading of an ordinance of the village of Salado, Texas, amending ordinance number 2018, Act 13, regarding mandatory connection to a public wastewater system, providing for an effective date, severity, repealer, and proper notice and meeting. Donna?
Yes, sir. This is the companion ordinance that we talked about, and this particular ordinance relates to the reference to the impact fees and the areas that are to pay those impact fees in the beginning, that were part of the mandatory connection ordinance. So, again, there's, they're kind of intertwined. This is the particular ordinance that has that penalty clause that has folks concerned regarding fines and penalties and things along those lines, so we've gone in per your direction, and we removed any type of criminal prosecution clause, and then we went in and removed any type of fine clause in the, in the provision relating to civil penalties. The civil penalties basically would include injunction relief. One thing I would say is, if you're interested in adding in a lesser penalty clause from a, from a, or fine clause, if you will, from a civil standpoint, we have that language that we can include and give to you, but right now, we basically are pulling that out per your direction and only having the simple remedy of an injunction, which means we would have to go to court and try to force somebody to connect if they're, if they've not connected. We've also made some minor cleanups while we've had the ordinance opened up, just from a definition standpoint and things along those lines. So, it's before you tonight for consideration. The one thing I will say is this, and that is, at some point, and maybe the time to do that is in the second reading when it comes up, but we need to have a discussion about how we truly want to move forward with those folks who have not connected, because we have some deadline structures in place. If we want to go in to maybe set some new deadlines on those to try to move them forward towards the direction, now that you've modified your ordinances, that's certainly something that we need to do. But this basically is step two, the final step in your effort to do away with the impact fees for the initial customer base.
Questions to Donna, please.
So, Donna, are you saying in section 23B, you're actually omitting that under the simple remedies?
Yes.
So, B would go away?
Yes, it goes away.
Okay.
The only thing you'd have left would basically be, the civil remedies would be, nothing in this section shall be construed as a way where the village is right to bring civil action and enforce provisions in this section and to seek remedies as allowed by law, including but not limited to that, A, injunction of relief to prevent specific conduct that violates the ordinance or requires specific conduct that's necessary for compliance with this ordinance, and then B would then become other available relief. And then B would then become other available relief. So you're taking out basically the current B that was in the draft and removing it completely and just basically saying A and B, with B being other relief, as opposed to the civil penalty of up to $5,000.
So what tools would be left then in terms of connection?
Injunctive relief, going to court.
Say it again?
He says what tools would be left, what tools would be left in regards to making the connection or forcing them to connect? And we'd say you'd have to go to court and get an injunction to make that happen, as opposed to fining them or going to court.
So is it a criminal penalty?
No, not now.
No, not in this. Should it be a criminal penalty? Here's my point. We all know that when we go to court civilly, no, and this is a question, that when you go to court, there is a difference in the civil side and the criminal side. So is there a difference? I mean, is that something that we should be able to pursue on both sides?
We followed your direction. Our feeling is, let me tell you my feeling from a staff standpoint, and we're here to follow your guidance and direction and your will. It's not what we want, what we need. Our feeling is this, if you have an ordinance, typically ordinances have civil and criminal penalties. And if you don't have a penalty, you shouldn't have an ordinance. I mean, and we're not in the business of penalizing people. So we've gone in based on the direction and the concerns that were expressed, and I understand those concerns, and that is, you know, let's get rid of the fines. But the concern was over the $5,000 fine, we went in and pulled all the fine language out because we felt like that probably was maybe the desire and intent of the board. If it's not, we can simply leave the criminal one there. The criminal provisions are up to $2,000 a day, you know. You don't have to say up to $2,000 a day either. You have the right to scope those down. You could say $100 a day and say that's the maximum fine from 50 to $100 a day and let the judge decide whether that's the case, the city judge decide whether that's the case or not. But Amber, as far as criminal goes, we went in and removed any type of fine provisions. You know, typically, our ordinances contain both. It's what's going to motivate people and what people are going to react to as far as if they're not complying.
Yeah.
I mean, in this situation, basically what they're going to react to is, I guess the concept is there's, the concern is going to be that they may have to go out and hire an attorney to represent themselves in a civil action regarding an injunction.
Well, Don, in a nutshell, I'm an engineer, I don't, you know, I'm not a lawyer to read these things, but it looks to me like that we're still having ordinance, and it still says that you're required to connect and that you have a certain period that you should connect to, and that if we don't, if you don't connect, we're not going to charge you up to $5,000 per day, which I don't know where that came from. The first I heard from it was just in the last couple of weeks. But then it also says we can also take some kind of civil litigation on. I think we want to have an ordinance, or not even have an ordinance, but just let people know, we've got a sewage system out there, you're more than welcome to connect to it, here's our fees if you want to connect to it, and this is what you'll be paying. And at this point of the game, if they want to connect, fine. If they don't want to connect, that's fine too.
Yes, sir. I want to make a question out of that.
Is that the way this current ordinance reads?
No. This current ordinance reads, you're mandated to connect, and if you don't connect to the ordinance, you know, when told to do so, by the time allowed to do so, that's your subject. Doesn't say you will face injunction, it says you're subject to injunctive relief, which means the city can take you to court and
At our cost.
And basically try to force you to connect. I will tell you this, and that is, I will say from a staff perspective, again, we're here to follow your direction, but I will tell you, you have a plant that has an operation cost that has to be recovered. And that operation cost is covered through your monthly revenues. And one of the reasons you have mandatory connection is for two reasons, actually. Number one, it's for the environmental reason, to get people off the septic systems and get them onto a reliable septic system, meaning a city wastewater system. And then the other reason you do that is to generate the revenue needed to operate that particular plant, you know, which is a $100,000, $120,000 cost a year. And so you've got to try to recoup that cost. That's what your rates are going towards. Your rates right now are not going towards debt reduction, they're going towards paying the monthly operating costs. And without all the customers on board, you're going to have to pull money out of the general fund to cover that night.
Other questions, please?
Don, it was my understanding when this was presented before, that if a person didn't connect, that we could go in, connect them to the system, and then place a lien against mechanics?
Pulled, yeah, we pulled that out.
That's been pulled out.
Absolutely.
Okay.
We pulled it out because the concern was we were strong on people.
So what we're at right now, if you don't connect, you could possibly face a civil action.
Yep.
Well, I think by eliminating the impact fee, I think this board has shown good faith to help people get connected to the sewer system, I think.
Question, question. I need you to make a question a little bit.
Say, what do you agree on?
Is that right?
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any more questions to Don? All in our town, motion.
Your honor, I move that we rescind this ordinance in its entirety.
Is there a second to that?
I'm on second, just to hear the discussions. Second.
Discussion?
The reason that I think that we're having an ordinance that we took the criminal penalties out, and now we're stumbling on that we still have the ability to go in there and penalize people if we so choose under some kind of vague kind of application of this. So I'm of the kinder, gentler persuasion where we just, don't give me that face, and where we go in and encourage people to, you know, we dangle the carrot to get on this sewage system.
You know, I liken, again, the concept is if you take all the penalty out, why have the ordinance? And you're now down to, you know, you're mandating someone to connect. I liken it to the fact that years ago, the legislature required cities and counties to enter into interlocal agreements to manage subdivisions in the ETJs, okay? And they called it a 1445 agreement, and it was this big dictatorial mandate that came down from the state. There's no punitive provision if you don't have that agreement. And it leaves everybody dangling in this state of uncertainty as far as if I don't, what happens? You know? And so we've tried to follow your direction, which I think we have. We've followed your direction, tried to gut the sensitive pieces out of it and leave at least a potential civil, and I stress a potential civil remedy in there for you if you want to go there. If I had my brothers, from a staff standpoint, my brothers would be to go in and reinstate a civil penalty, reduce the cap on that civil penalty to something that is much more powerful than $5,000.
Shouldn't exceed the
Yeah, like, that's not a bad idea. You could potentially do that. He said it shouldn't exceed the, but build maybe some type of financial fine. You're not necessarily going to get hit with that fine to the max, but put at least a nominal civil penalty in there, get rid of the injunctive relief, or leave it in there as a potential opportunity, get rid of the criminal fees and get rid of the piece that we're going on your property, you're going to connect your property.
Well, the motion is to get rid of the whole thing.
Yeah, you're saying rescind the mandatory connection ordinance in full is what you're saying.
So my two cents is, anybody who wants to only have civil penalties has never had a divorce. Because let me tell you what, they're as good as the paper they're on. Because it's worthless. You can tell somebody all day long in a civil court that they have to do something, but there are no teeth. So no one's actually going to do it. We're going to spend all kinds of money on spending our lawyer's fees to take them to court, and they're not going to do anything anyways, and nothing's going to happen. And those, they could exceed $500,000 in fines, and it would still mean nothing. So if we don't have something with teeth in this ordinance, get rid of it, I don't care. But the bottom line is, our numbers are built on mandatory connections. And that was from day one, when our very first city attorney presented all of this, when Jim Reed was talking about this, to everybody, that was part of the deal was always mandatory connections. That was before I was even on the board.
It is.
Always talked about that.
It's typically part of the deal in any city.
So we built numbers based on that always being part of it. And so if that's how our numbers are built out, and we tell people, okay, well, not only do you not have to pay, you know, the other part, but now you also, you don't really have to connect if you don't want to, and we don't have people to fill that gap, we're not going to make our money back. And we're going to end up having to charge these people more money on the other end, whether we, you know, increase rates or whatever that number is to make that back because we can't go in the hole.
I guess I'll ask the question too, and that is the fact that the people that's connected, the 50% of the folks who've connected to this point did so under the assumption that it was a mandatory requirement.
Yeah.
So what am I to tell the person who calls up after this decision's made?
Yeah.
That I'm not going to pay the bill, I didn't want to connect in the first place. Now you're really in the mine.
Well, and then they're going to come back at us though, and you also made us get rid of our current system, so are we going to pay now to put their old septic system back in? Because we made them do it before. So I think that's a bad spot. We have to stick with the mandatory connections. And honestly, we need something with teeth in it, because you're right, we have shown good faith that we are not going to charge the impact fee. That was our part.
And they're getting it back.
The next part is, people are going to have to connect or there's going to have to be some sort of penalty, because the carrot thing in reality is not going to work.
We have nothing to dangle.
Mr. Bell, did you have something to say?
I'm up.
I met with a lady across the highway, she has two pieces of property, and she's required to, under the current ordinance, to go ahead and to tap into both of those pieces of property. She can't afford to do that and pay the impact fees. She can't afford to demolish her two existing tanks, and she can't afford to hardly pay her sewage bill. And on top of that, her taxes, she's going to be taxed to pay for the sewage treatment plant. So she's getting it, you know, the wrong end of the stick, no matter how you look at it. And I know Mr. Bell wants to go ahead and in a workshop, talk about how we can do, and like Ms. Darlene said, you know, there's another person out there that might be in some dire straits too. But, you know, we just can't keep, you know, enforcing and hurting people that we don't even really know that we're doing it this time. This not applies just to Johnny's and the big guys, this applies to the little bitty guys too, so. I'm done.
So along that same line, is it more fair to put the burden back on the taxpayers who are paying for this, who aren't reaping one bit of benefit from the sewer system, and their taxes go up?
Absolutely not. There's nothing fair about this whole system.
I agree with Amber that there needs to be some teeth in there. As long as, I mean, the $5,000 a day isn't the teeth to be wanted.
No.
I don't think any of this, I don't speak for anybody else, but I don't want that. I don't think there should be anything in here, you know, it's either 100 bucks a day until you hit a limit or a ceiling of 37.50 or 51.52, something like that. But it needs to have a ceiling on it to say, if I was willing to see what we would charge somebody who would come up to connect to the system. And that way you can keep the mandatory connections, have an LUE or have a fine structure in there. And I think you do get criminal, because that's what's going to allow you to go hold it in court. In a civil court, I don't think you're going to find a judge to rule with the municipality on any of this stuff. Not anymore, you wouldn't on the other end.
And that's better.
I'm very generous with what Frank asked, because he pulled that microphone close twice.
What I want to say, I can't say yet till we call the question on the term motion.
John, is there, is there any benefit? It would cause a lot of extra work. Is there any benefit of people who legitimately, truly cannot afford to do this, and they have some sort of proof of that? Is there a compromise here that we can make? Because both sides make a point.
You know, it's, there's two things. You have, you started off, you get four years to pay out, okay? You then set up a situation, the situation Mike references, and he and I have talked about it, this situation, she is in a difficult position. But the one vacant lot she's got, we've deemed her house, because no one's living in it as a storage, we deemed it as being vacant. She doesn't have to connect that particular lot, or she can pay a reservation fee for that particular lot. Now, her main house?
Yeah.
And in that situation, maybe you work the hardship to deal with them on that. But you've given them the option of connecting vacant property or not, at least in that initial service area. You've given them four years on the payout, which I guess goes away as we change this impact fee plan that we've got in place. And you need a hardship program, not just for impact fees, but you need a hardship program to look at plumbing costs, you need a hardship program to deal with monthly service rates. Because, you know, we talk a lot about those initial chunks, but at the end of the day, after the dust settles, the impact fee dust settles and plumbing dust settles, there's still a month of service fee that some people with limited incomes may have difficulty paying. And that's not an uncommon problem in cities across this country for water as well as wastewater. And that's why utilities typically come up with hardship programs. So I, Mayor, I think there's
Yeah, but if they use it, then they should pay for it. If I use electricity, I'm going to pay for it. If I use water, I'm going to pay for it. And if you lived in any city other than Salado, if you go to the bathroom and the toilet, you're going to pay for it. And so this is not like uncommon. I don't understand, I mean, I know that there are people out there that have a hard time paying, but people have six, five, six years to prepare for this. This is not new information. And I'm tired of hearing about all these people having hardship cases, like they were blown away, they had no idea. We're talking years that people have had to prepare. So I'm sorry, but this does not affect me at all. I think we should still move forward with the penalty side of it.
Any other discussion?
Question.
Question has been called. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand.
The motion was to rescind.
Yes. Please. Opposed, opposed? Raise your hand.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to make a motion that we reinstate the entire ordinance as it's currently written with a maximum of $100 a day fine for criminal and not less than 50 and not more than $100 a day for the civil.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Mayor, can I ask real quickly? We made some other cleanup items, as I pointed out, and there just that.
Well, I want to go back, if we have to go with a lien, I want that ability to do that. That's what I'm putting back in. You said you took that part out?
Yeah, we took
We don't have the two to compare, so I can't write a motion that says, changes.
Basically, the lien, the go on the property lien place goes back in place, the civil penalties go back in place, and the criminal penalties go back in place, is what you're saying.
Right, at $100 a day.
On both.
On the civil, minimum 50, maximum 100. But the 100 would be on the criminal.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Would be a ceiling?
No. That's the point of having that daily thing, is that it builds up and you reach a breaking point, you're going, I've got to do this, I can't afford a fee. Fine. That's the whole point of having this part.
I agree with you having it, but it seems like you shouldn't have a ceiling. I mean, you're going to, I mean, you're going to have to say, at some point, somebody's going to wind up paying double, you know? And I understand that, but
Do we have a second on this motion?
And that motion, I guess my point is, can that motion allow for some of the just general cleanup stuff that was not related to this whole penalty minutes ago?
So I guess my motion is the intent of the original ordinance.
To address the penalty fees.
And allow for liens. So the other point is, I mean, I agree with you a little bit, so I think the point ought to be that the maximum becomes what they owe in the LUE.
Yeah, exactly.
Although we don't have an impact fee, so you can't compare it to that, that's the issue. There is no, there's no impact fee now, there's no connection fee.
To make the max, the new improvement, you can't expect the cost of the LUE. If you were
And see, my point is if you don't connect by this, I think you ought to have to pay the impact fees if you don't make the deadline. That would be my next. If you don't connect by whatever deadline we decide to set now, if you're not connected by then, you're subject to the impact fees, the fifty-one fifty.
Could the fines, I'll, I'll throw another question. Could the fine they pay, the total amount of fine they pay apply towards what their total impact fee payment would be?
That's where I was going next, yes. Yes, whatever fine they pay would go to pay, would be used towards that.
Credit it towards.
So assuming, we're talking about this happening after the deadline, this would go into effect. So then, you know, levy the fine on them, bring them before the city court. Levy the fine and then, yes, keep them towards their impact fee at that point.
So we're going to fine everybody out there a maximum of a hundred dollars a day. And what determines the, whether it's a one dollar a day or a hundred dollar a day maximum?
The, the range only happens if it's a civil case. Criminal pays it. If it's criminal, it's a hundred dollars a day, period. That's what I'm saying. If it's civil, it's between fifty and a hundred.
So if we have sixty people, sixty users out there right now that haven't logged on to this thing, are we going to start assessing them a hundred dollars a day penalties at this moment?
No, depending on what new deadline we decide to set in our workshop. I mean, this would not go into effect until our, our deadline to connect.
And a second reading.
Correct, second reading. So, I mean, I'm expecting that our new deadline's going to be years in to get all this into effect or close to it. Possibly.
Okay, any other discussion on this? I have the call for a question.
Question.
Question has been called. Hall in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, live by, passes. Number five, discussion and possible action.
Can I very quickly, just with reluctance, ask a point of clarification?
Thank you.
Go ahead.
The legislative intent is the fine should, the total amount of the fine shall not exceed the amount of one L U E?
No, the impact fees due for that property.
Okay, the total impact fees due for property, yeah.
That would be my intent.
I just want to make sure when, when we go modify, I don't want to feel we modify a riot. Got it.
Okay, number B, number five, discuss and consider possible action regarding the appointment of members to the historic overlay district task force.
Uh, Mayor, members, this, this is on there for you to uh, discuss the idea of appointing members to the task force that we talked about at the last meeting that we established. Uh, as you know, this is a, a limited term task force. The, the goal of this organization would be to sit down and to provide input to the board and to the planning zoning commission about the type of regulations that should be included uh, when we draft the ordinance creating a historic overlay district for the particular area. Uh, it's supposed to be a five-member task force made up of two members from the Salado Historical Society, which will be their choice. Uh, one member from the planning and zoning commission, uh, one member from the Ford Alderman, uh, and the owner of one property located within the village's historic area. To date, we've not received any names. We, we feel the historical society, we've already told them they need to come up with a couple of folks, which they, they told us they would do. Uh, P and Z, we talked to Kate about that idea and they'll bring forward a name too from their group. So it's really up to you all to decide with Alderman. Uh, and if you know of any owners uh, within the historic area, that would be considered for that one at large position.
So you're looking for?
I'm looking for the name of an Alderman who would sit on this task force. And if you have it tonight, if you don't, that's fine. The name of the owner of a property located within the village's historic area who would sit on this task force.
Are you looking for two names?
Yes, sir. For you all. The others will bring their names forward.
Let's uh, let's begin with the latter and then we'll go to the other. Who has property uh, in the historic area that you think, or you would like to nominate as a part of it?
Vic, would you be willing to sit on this committee? Yes, sir. That I will put Vic Dean's name up as a property owner on Main Street in historic history.
Vic Dean's been nominated. Others? Other nominations? If there are no other nominations, do I hear a motion to that? Is there a second?
Sir.
Would you have made a second in discussion, please? Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed, live by, passes.
Welcome back.
Thank you, Vic.
Okay, now then, Corin Alderman. Let me get this one. Is there anyone who would like an Alderman? Is there an Alderman that would like to volunteer for this? Is there an Alderman who would like to volunteer for this? Or would you rather be nominated and then make a decision? So would you serve?
What's the frequency of the, of the, of um?
I think they're, they're set their meeting schedules. When they get the group together, they'll decide whether they want to meet once a month, once a week, two weeks, whatever. I don't think the process, John, as you know, is going to be extremely time consuming. I think it'll be pretty quick.
Yeah, I'll do it.
How about Mr. Gold?
Second.
Discussion?
Question.
Would it be licensed?
Can you hear the train coming through? Question has been called. Hall in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, live by, passes. That was a close call.
Goes around, goes around.
Please, discuss and consider possible action casting votes for directors of the Vail County Appraisal District Board.
Yes, sir. I, I don't know that I can find record that you all have voted on this position at least in the last few years. Uh, but uh, you have an opportunity to vote, uh, you know, for, for a member, I guess you would call it a small city member representative on the appraisal district board. This is not the appraisal review board that reviews individual appraisals. This is the mother board of the appraisal district that serves as the management board for the district that works with the chief appraiser and his staff and, and the operation. Uh, they basically, as you know, are a seven-member board. One member representing the city of Temple, another member representing Temple ISD, and another one member representing City of Killeen. Another member representing Killeen ISD, and then one member who represents Belton and Belton ISD. And there's one member who represents everybody else. Uh, Bell County has one member. Uh, and you're asked to weigh in for the resolution tonight on membership for the individuals who represents everybody else, the small city member. Uh, your current member is a gentleman by the name of Jared Bryan, and apparently he's expressed interest in being reappointed uh, for a term that would begin January first, twenty twenty. It would be a two-year term. So uh, you have the opportunity to cast your vote for him or cast your vote for somebody else if you so choose.
Jared, what's your name?
Uh, no, he does not.
What's your name?
Does not wish for that.
Are there any names that you would like to put forward? Are there any names that you would like to put forward? Has the one who is currently now?
Yes, sir, that's Jared. And he's interested in being reappointed.
How much time does that take?
You know, uh, this is one of those boards that probably depends on truly how, how into it you want to get. The minimum, minimum requirement's obviously going to be a regular board meeting, but uh, my belief is you could probably become more active. More of a hands-on type of deal.
Is Jared here or not?
Has anybody ever seen Jared?
He's in my.
This is such an important, we made the board.
No, I'm a second. And you don't have to vote if you don't want to vote.
I think I saw Rodney raise his hand. He likes taxes.
Rodney, are you going? Any other names, please?
The thing to keep in mind is you're, you're, you're casting a vote as, as other entities are casting a vote. So whoever you name for is going to have to support from the other entities to get in.
Why don't we dump vote for Jared?
You don't have to.
I mean, we don't know anything about him or how he's represented Salado or.
This is simply a pastor from the appraisal district. So if you don't want to vote, you don't have to vote.
How soon do they have to have?
A member second.
We can either, we can either postpone this or.
You're going to have another meeting for a second. So your options are free for you. You can not vote at all. You can vote for Jared or you can offer another name up and see if that individual gets support from another community.
The first option, I'm interested in not having anybody on this board. I think Salado needs to be represented everywhere we possibly can. We are the captains of our own city. We're responsible for, we're responsible for our citizens. This is the appraisal district board. That's, that's pretty important.
Maybe we can go with it this year and then next year, like have a little lead time to, to try to prepare somebody to, I mean, we can't come up with a new name tonight and then get them.
If you're going to offer a name, the person needs to know.
It'll be two years from now before we do this again. Two-year term.
But, you know, we have time to prepare to get somebody actually on that board.
In full disclosure, school board didn't sign this. I mean, you have a name on Friday.
It's very, it's very typical. The board is not real. It's not very visible. Like I said, this is not the A R B. The A R B is the one that you go to. And they're the, they're a power board because they're the ones that modify your rate. They modify your value. Uh, this board is basically a management board for the district. It's, it's a policy setting board for the district.
Would you abstain or vote for this guy?
Okay, we need to take an action here.
I was going to say if we don't vote, it's really not a, it's almost as if we're telling Jared, we don't care whether you're on there or not. I would rather support him and let him know Salado did cast a vote for him so he might think twice about doing harm to the village. So make a motion, we nominate Jared Bryan for a, for a new term.
Second.
Discussion, you can walk for a lack of a second. Discussion?
Question.
Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand, please. Opposed, live by, passes. Do we have any kind of program going to help families?
Jared? He's an incumbent.
A little bit, but does he need any more training? I've heard your comments have worked for me. I'm just not sitting there a lot of training.
I think it'd be a good idea. In fact, I think there's values and the school board too. And I think the county's representative ought to come visit. Maybe both of them could come visit with Salado. Because both of them could be our leaders.
I think that's a great idea. Discussing, discuss and consider possible action authorizing the village administrator to acquire and install a flagpole at the municipal building and amending the fiscal year twenty twenty operating budget to reflect the unbudgeted expenditure. Do you want me?
I think we were going to say allegiance to it. We ought to put a flagpole in front of the building.
Is that a motion?
No.
We received a proposal. I would up that number to twenty-four hundred instead of twenty-three.
If you have questions to Rodney, please raise them.
I have a question for Rodney. We've had discussions about moving out of this building over to the civic center. Right? Is that still alive and well?
Like ten years out.
Yeah, that's not acting anymore soon. Schools have been having work done.
Our student council representative has a question.
Have you ever thought about like talking to like a Boy Scouts or anything like that that would do something like that? Because we had one kid um, build a big soccer thing in there and then one other kid like um, put spots for the band. And they might be interested in doing something like that.
Eagle Scout project.
Yes, that's very good. That's a good idea.
That'd be great.
It's a great idea.
Save us an installation.
That's a good question.
Save us on the cost of the pole or?
It's about a fifty-fifty split on the cost of installation and pole. About a grand for the pole and about a grand for installation.
Yeah, but they, I think Eagle Scout projects, at least the ones that we do with the kids on Fort Hood, they reap all of the money. So we wouldn't have the, yeah, the product and, and the making of it.
I'd be interested in that. All I'd like to see is a flagpole here. How we get it there, I really don't care. I just think we need something here to say, this is where we are.
Can I go get one of those ten ninety-five flag holders and put it on the door?
Let's, for the record stands, we, we, we received an opportunity for a gracious donation a few years back. And when we went and looked at the pole, it was rusted out and it was not really suitable. So, but, but this would be a little bit more substantial. But I think the idea of having them do the whole thing is a great idea.
How big's it going to be and where's it going to go?
Uh, we've, we've looked at somewhere in the neighborhood of about seventeen to twenty feet. It would be right out front here where our septic field used to be.
How big is our flag?
Uh, I would say it was four by six, eight by five, if I'm not mistaken.
Are we going to have lights on it?
You'll have to have lights. It's up at night. Yes, sir.
Okay. No one's going to take it up and down during the day. It's just going to stay lit all night?
We have the ability to take it up and down if that's the direction we get. Either one doesn't work.
So I'd like to make a motion that we ask the village administrator to pursue a service project with one of our local scouts. Whether it be where they're on, doesn't matter on this topic here.
Second.
Second. Much been made in second in discussion?
We might want to dry, uh, draw out our expectations, like a limited number of expectations and then kind of give them free rein from there, but.
We've got, we've got specs and everything, so that's good. That's a great idea.
So what kind of timeline we looking at, do you think?
Well, we need to get ahold of scouts to find out what the schedule looks like. I don't want to commit now.
Avery says she'd take the lead.
Okay, question. Question has been called. All in favor, raise your hand.
Let there be a point.
We're going into the workshop now. Number A, discuss and consider issues relating to the development of a hardship program for certain property owners required to connect to the Salado wastewater system.
Mayor, you gave us direction at the last meeting to begin looking at this and, and before we get too deep into it, we need input from you all. Uh, because there are many ways to look at this particular situation. And I think there are several steps in, in establishing a hardship program. As I mentioned, hardship programs when it comes to utilities are not uncommon at all. Uh, small cities as well as large cities across the country offer these. As I mentioned, hardship programs, when it comes to utilities, are not uncommon at all. Small cities as well as large cities across the country offer these, recognizing the fact that they have senior citizens, or they have individuals with extremely limited household incomes, and there's an obligation because they are connected and they are using water, they are using wastewater. In this case, we're talking about wastewater. I mean, one of the first steps we need to decide, number one, is what's the target audience we're trying to benefit through this program? Who is going to be the beneficiary as far as the customer base? Then what we need to do is look at securing partners and see if there's some extra funding sources out there, depending on the customer class we've identified, that may have funding that may be applicable to go towards programs like this, because there's sometimes federal money out there available for people who are in certain situations that we might be able to capitalize and maybe partner with and minimize the demand on general fund dollars or wastewater operating fund dollars. Analyze and select the options. How do you want to go about doing it? I mean, is it a situation that you're trying to address impact fees, you're trying to address plumbing costs, or you're trying to address the monthly service fees? There are ways, there are different types of options you can look at. If it's the monthly bills, you can go in and maybe, you know, grant discounts, you can go in and maybe, you know, look at doing payment, certain types of payment plans for certain people in needs. Some cities waive the late fees for people who qualify for the waiver of late fees if they're late on their thing. Some people set up a certain time of the month where people in need pay versus what the other customer pays, just to better fit their schedules based on income coming in via social security, whatever. So there are a number of options we can look at from that standpoint. On the plumbing piece, one of the things we've looked at is the idea of going out and maybe getting a bulk bid on plumbing from an outside contractor to get some type of guaranteed pricing that an individual might be able to use. We talked about doing that way back in the beginning, but literally getting a guaranteed pricing to the point that a business could come and say, you know, I want to use his price as opposed to the four other plumbers who quoted me three times that cost. The thing to keep in mind, though, is a lot of times that price is going to be based on some type of assurance that they're going to be doing 15 or 20 properties as opposed to one individual property or two individual properties, those type of things. So there may be need to do some homework on that and get some people on board regarding participation and commitments, or at least a desire to do something like that. But you can do that and have it out there. You're not mandating them use your contractor, but you're getting maybe potentially a lower bid price for someone to connect. You know, so impact fees, I think the thing you got to understand about impact fees, or impact fees are a regulated piece, okay, and they're set up by state law, and I think it's important to understand that when you start breaking impact fees down, there has to be fairness across the table, you know, for everybody, for that class. You can't start at one point and then, without going back and, for lack of a better phrase, making everybody whole who may fall into that class, so keep that in mind if you want to deal with impact fees. Fairness is critical, and you have to have a methodology and reasoning behind it that you can stand behind. And then, you know, the monthly service fees that we talked about and how you want to deal with those. So we look at the options. We then would take whatever options we've come up with, we'd do the financial analysis, see how it works out, we'd examine legal liability issues, then if we have the plan, if we have the approach we want to take, at that stage in game, we'd go through a training, communication, outreach process, and we implement. It's pretty simple from that standpoint. But the first and foremost issue that we need to address, and that is, who's our target audience? What is it we're trying, who are we trying to benefit? Who are we trying to help out in this situation? What is a hardship? Is a hardship a senior citizen? Is a hardship somebody of limited income? Is a hardship somebody with a disability? You know, is the hardship someone who just lost their job or someone who just went through a divorce? You know, believe it or not, there are cities that actually offer programs and incentive practices for people who've gone through life changes like divorce and things like that, so. I guess my question to you is, who are we trying to benefit through this program, and then we can start shaping something up, that would be my first question.
Is there any reason that we would even offer it for an impact fee? Because my thought is, the only people that we would offer any break to at all are people who are already by the first reading of our ordinance, not going to be getting impact fees, because they're these existing people that kind of got thrown into this for whatever reason. Because if you come in here and you're going to build something, but you can't afford the impact fees, you don't get to build it. So there's no reason that we would even consider impact fees, because it should only be for existing businesses. And I think we really ought to look at the other local utilities, like trash, trash and water, and see if they give any monthly fees, because I can tell you at least one of them that does not. You pay your bills. There is not, like, any other options. So I'm not sure if the bill thing, the only thing that I would potentially be okay with is the construction fees and getting a bulk rate to kind of help lessen that, but that's the only area that I see as a potential.
Would our first target area, and I agree with the second, the first target area would be only those people inside the original sewer system. Does that eliminate?
I would say yes, it owns residential properties. And Don, what's our base rate? Is it based on a single LUE?
No, your base rate for residential is based on the strength of your wastewater. So if it's residential, you're, if you're considered residential low impact, you're like $40 bucks on a commercial side residential, you're less than that, so I mean.
Is that per LUE or?
It's a base rate, and then there's volumetric on top of that, and you go up to 60 if you're a high impact user.
So what's the base rate?
For 40 and 60?
But that's based on an annual average of what?
Well, it's not an annual average, it's a customer class. That's right. Customer class. Your 20, 40 and 60 is your base.
And what goes on top of that?
Your volumetric. Your volumetric is per thousand gallon charge. Pull it up, read you exactly it.
But it's like the Masonic Lodge, they're required to connect to our sewage system, and I think that he told me that their actual sewage rate, discharge rate is like 10 gallons per month. And, but we don't recognize a micro user is what I call it, and any kind of, any kind of fair rate charge. I mean, it seems like we ought to have another category in there for it. A micro user that only pays, you know, seven bucks a month, because that's about what they use, instead of, I think they reported the numbers, that they'd be using it, it'd be a dollar eighty-five a gallon of sewage that they would be putting in, and that's not fair for them under any kind of sewage system rates I've ever seen.
Everybody has a minimum.
So regardless, Don, you're paying for the first thousand?
Yes. Well, no, it's a fraction. What you do is you multiply, the way it works is this, you'll take, let's just say residential, because residential is based on winter averaging. So what you're going to do is you're going to take their total water use over that four-month winter average period, you're going to break that down into a monthly use, and then you divide that number by 1,000, whatever that number comes up to 1,000 is what you multiply times the volumetric piece of the rate. So if you have a fraction, if you're under 1,000, then you're going to pay a fraction of 1,000.
So that's already computed?
Yes.
First lady.
I think trying, I think the best thing we can do right now, and this is my opinion on this, is, and Don and I talked about it, you mentioned it Denver just a second ago, is trying to find someone who's willing to do bulk work for us, and be willing to give a substantial discount to connect a minimum of 15 or 20 properties, whatever that is, to get us towards this 100% connection, and help some of these people with their overall cost, rather than having to go out and piecemeal one contractor at a time to get their job done. If we have somebody that's willing to come in and do, and we get these people together and say, this contractor will come in and get all this done, and this is the rate, and try to help them out on it.
And we found that, we found that to be pretty beneficial in situations where we ended up ending up connecting people. When the determination was made that we were going to need to connect, you know, the property there on Federal Valley and those type of guys, we had five or six connections that had to be made, and they took care of those quick. The rates are just, the base rate is 20 for residential, 40 for low impact, non-residential, and 60 for high impact residential. The volumetric difference, it's eight on a residential per thousand, 11 for low impact per thousand, and non-residential 60.
Don, does the county health district or health group, does the, do they have a whole rate for moving systems? Do they, or do they have any guidance on contractors that do that?
They will tell you, you're on your own situation. The thing to understand on the decommissioning case, the decommissioning piece is the chief piece. You know, unless you've got, unless you have a septic tank that's tucked in between the buildings where it's difficult to get to, it's pretty simple to decommission those. The bigger cost you run into are plumbing costs, where, I'll give you an example, I've got one down in our church street that we're dealing with right now, that literally, the lot's long and narrow, it's a small little house in the middle of it, and you're running half the lot just to get to where you can make the connection, which is a scene, and there's rock involved in that and those type of things.
After we figure out how we're going to determine, you know, who's qualified, to, for that, if we go that way for the construction piece piece, there has to be a piece in there too, that for all the people who qualified, they won't be penalized for the late connection, because I don't think Ringo will do that and get a contract awarded and all that, that, well, not awarded, but that picked out and all that stuff in the amount of time. So I would assume that we're going to have to put something out there where if you plan on applying for hardship, it's got to come, because we're going to have to know and have that number, and then those people are the only ones that are exempt from that piece. Just can't leave that out.
Is there enough money left in the bond to create a payout program?
Can you use bond money for that? Remember, we looked at that in legal's determination.
Couldn't connect, that's right.
Bond council said.
I remember that now.
It was a great idea. It really was a great idea.
I don't think it's realistic to hope that a contractor is going to come in and give us a discount just because it's a hardship issue. I don't see us.
But we're not talking about hardships, we're just talking about getting a bulk rate. If he knows he's going to get, not just come to do one, but he's coming to do 20 or 25 or even 15, people are already here, substantial chance they're going to give you a break on that.
Mobilization, that would be where the brakes would come, the mobilization. It's the same thing we ran into when we got connected here, is we got a perceived cut in our price because they were back to back next to each other, it was two of them on stop.
Since hardships are common in a lot of these entities, these towns, do you see any of the commonalities?
Senior citizens, 65 and older, you typically see, when they offer them, they typically go in that particular direction. Where the differential you typically see comes into the income qualifications, if you start getting into people as far as the low-income status, at what point is going to be the break point? Are you going to go by federal standard, state standard, how many people are in the house, those type of things? That's where, that's where it gets a little weird.
Is there any number of hardship cases we may have right now?
You know, we worked hard to keep the rates down when the rates were set for the system, and they're not cheap, no rates cheap, but they're much cheaper than they could have been from that standpoint. The hardship concerns I hear are, to be honest with you, I hear concerns, obviously, impact fees, which you're addressing, from that standpoint with the existing customer base, but probably some of the bigger hardship concerns I hear from people is the cost of the plumbers. And, you know, I mean, it's, the costs are all over the board.
So if we get the plumbers under control, we may not have any hardship cases.
Well, I think the concept is offering an alternative to what may be out there today as a competitive fees for them to choose from, giving them another choice. You know, obviously, there are several factors that drive the plumbing piece, and I'm not going to indict plumbers, because I think a lot of those guys have given a lot of time and a lot of effort, and quite frankly, a lot of their blood, sweat, and tears, and given up some revenue to make it happen. Some have made some revenue to make it happen, I can tell you that. But what I can tell you, though, is the unknown, the unknown quantities such as rock, the unknown quantities such as getting around trees, the unknown quantities such as the length of runs, those type of things are what drives some of the cost, but I mean, I've seen some residential connections that they've gotten quotes. I sit and I stare at Vic, and I see what he's dealt with, some of their quotes are significant, I mean, which is, and it's a small house that's sitting on Main Street, and yeah, you got to go to the back of it, but the kicker is, sometimes you wonder about the cost of what they're quoting.
So this might turn into a case-by-case basis, after inspection of the property and an estimate for the connection fee to determine whether hardship.
I think what would happen is, we would need to do an inventory and give any contractor that's going to bid, literally, a list of all those properties that have yet to be connected, and they're going to need to go out and look visibly at each one of those and give an ID, because they're not going to just, you're going to have a hard time getting a guy just to say, okay, I'm going to charge a $20 a foot. Because that $20 a foot on Vic's place may be great, because there's dirt, but on Darlene's place, there may be six inches of rock.
Like my house.
Yeah, and that's where the unknown comes, and the scary thing about it is, when you get the proposal from the plumber that says, Will gets the proposal from a plumber that says it's going to be $15,000, but then there's the unknown, there's the rock factor, if it hits rock, and it's the open end at $250 an hour, for every hour he's got to work to get rid of the rock, and that's the, that's the one that goes, good lord, your mind starts racing and thinking, he could be out there 10 hours. So.
I don't think we can really give you a great decision. I think we've got to just figures in front of us, so I don't know what we're talking about. In other words, you made a suggestion a while ago about contacting a plumber or someone who could do it, and find out, would they do exactly what we're asking of them?
They will. We know for a fact they will. There are several companies that will do that.
Do you know how much money they would charge?
No, as we were saying, until you make the decision to go out and you get the bulk bid, you're not going to know that. But before you go there, the concept, again, I go back to the initial question, that is, who is it we're trying to benefit? Who's the target? We don't want to go to options yet. When you go to the target, are we talking about benefiting seniors, folks who are disabled, folks who are economically challenged?
To me, those two separate issues. This bid process could benefit everybody that needs to connect, that still needs to connect. Then I think what we need to do is look at some comparative programs in this area or similar sized cities around Texas, and see what they're doing to address this.
The programs you're seeing typically relate to monthly user bills, monthly user fees, and that's typically where you see the benefit, you know, that's where you see the Saws and the San Antonio's and those types, the bigger cities typically you see it, where they've got larger socioeconomic issues than we have in this community, and they're more challenged in that sense. But when you talk about hardship, I just want to make sure we identify the hardship, and who is the hardship, what is the hardship, what is the definition of hardship, before we go too much further, and is it the person who can't afford the plumber? Is it the person who can't afford a monthly bill?
I don't see how we can address connection issues. I mean, that is what it is. In terms of helping him on the backend with rate, that's something I think we could look at. I think we look at comparative programs from other cities, but I don't know how you would go about addressing, I mean, we don't have funds to do that. Connection is what I'm talking about.
And again, I think the problem you run into in the connection piece is, if you start trying to offer breaks on the connection piece on the front end, the impact fees and stuff like that, you've got a group of people who've already connected, and to be very honest with you, some of those folks, you know, didn't necessarily have all the means that others might have, and they still did it.
So, Don, what kind of guidance do you want?
I think you've given me some, given me some direction, that there seems to be interest, tell me if I'm wrong, guys, there seems to be interest in taking the next step to look at the plumbing fees, to see if we can look at getting some type of bulk plumbing bid, and then maybe start looking at maybe from a rate standpoint, how we might be able to bring forward some type of proposal, either to have a modified rate structure for people who may fall into a certain customer class, as opposed to providing some relief through a break, or something like that, as far as, you know, as far as fees and things along those lines. Tell me if I'm off.
I think right on, I think we've got to have a little more information before we give them the sun, don't you?
Is it?
I just think that we should look at other utilities in the area, because are we setting a precedent that's not necessary with any other bill in Salado, and we're just giving money away because people are going to claim a hardship whether or not they want it? Because I guarantee you, I'd be the. 'Cause I guarantee you, I'd be the first one standing in line, saying, I'm a single mom with two kids, you know, and how, who are you to say no? You know what I'm saying? So, I think that hardship thing's, it's a slippery slope, we really need to look at what everybody else is doing.
The other thing it does is you gotta, you're right, in, in the fact you gotta be conscious of what your other utility is doing in this community, and your other utility in the community is not offering that, and are you putting them in, are you putting them in a hardship?
They're trash.
Yeah, trash guys don't.
No.
Trash people stop picking the trash up, so I mean, that's...
And electric is real limited. I mean, you better have a tornado come through your area, 'cause they're not giving it away.
Can you start them on core?
But I'm just saying, like, you know, if, if you use it, you pay for it. It's not like I can, you're not, ugh, let me start it.
Well, the difference is, is that they're not, I mean, they don't need it. If you're out there in your house and you have a septic system just working, you know, I am just happy as I can be. And now, we're telling them, like, mandatorily have to connect and mandatorily have to start paying their, uh, their bills and their sewage system, and so that's the difference between, you know, the electric and all that, everybody understands that. But if you've been living in Salado twenty years in this house, and all of a sudden the, the bond got passed, and here comes people tearing up the road in front of your house, and now you're required to do that, you know, it's just too much for some people to understand and navigate through. What's the difference of that, or, or, or here comes Joe Smith Cable Company, who takes away your TV and you will hook up to cable, or you don't watch TV? It's the same premise, it's progress.
I'm, I'm interested in the original service area, those who fix income over sixty-five that don't need certain accommodations, so, those are my four.
Thank you.
That's me, that's not me.
And I agree, and I just think we need to look at some other cities, and if there's nothing that meets that criteria, I just want some comparison to look at. I'm not saying that's where we go, but it's at least something to see what other places are...
And the only reason we, the only reason we posed the question to you is, you said hardship program, and I wanna know what you mean by hardship. Who, who is the target audience of the hardship?
So, so is, is a hardship a guy who's got a business who breaks even and makes no profit, is he a hardship?
No commercial.
No commercial, we're only talking residential.
My guidance is, don't mess with them. If they don't, if they don't need sewage, don't make them, uh, have a tap into our system. That's my guidance.
Can you have a, you have a...
I've got nothing, but you give me good input, across, across the spectrum, quite frankly.
Yes, it is across the spectrum, but that's okay.
It's good input.
B, discuss and consider issues relating to the development and designation of an official flag for the Village of Salado. Is this Troy Kelly?
This is Troy Kelly, and Troy came in one day and said, you know, I'd like to do something. And I said, what's that? He said, he said, this city needs a flag, it needs an official flag. He said, a lot of cities have flags, I think Temple's got a flag, other cities have flags, and he said, we need a, we need a flag. He said, you know, the idea is, uh, there's discussions underway, so you know about what I call the, the island down there across from the entrance to Mill Creek in the interstate, about putting up a mother flagpole down there, just that would be gardened and would, would somebody keep Salado beautiful money. He thought they could be Googled, the city flag in addition to a US and a state flag application, with the discussions about a flagpole here, you know, you could put one here, too. So he went off and, and did some research and, and put his mind on paper and said, this is what I'd like to propose. And so, what he has proposed...
It's gotta have...
Is that. And what he's done is, he's taken, uh, basically the typical standards that are used in the development of flags, uh, for government, and has tried to build, uh, those elements into a flag that would represent Salado. Obviously, the blue meaning the Salado Creek, uh, the, the star meaning we're the center of Texas, uh, of course, the state of Texas, and of course, the, the Texas flag colors is used. But this is, what he's come up with is an idea for consideration, which is kinda, kinda interesting, uh, you know, and it grows on as you, as you look at it. Uh, doesn't say the name Salado on it, like you see typically in other city flags, but it doesn't necessarily have to. Uh, the state of Texas flag doesn't say that, the US flag obviously doesn't say that. Uh, but I, I wanted to toss this out and get your thoughts on it, and then your thoughts on, first of all, even having a city flag, but second of all, what's your thoughts as far as this potential design? So I think it's an issue that's gonna come back up if and when we get to putting the mother pole up down on the island.
Where's the upfront money coming from, Don?
Well, he's, he's doing this, he's doing this gratis, and I think if, if this is the design that you guys are interested in, obviously, if and when the time comes to produce the flag for the mother pole or this building, uh, we, we look to the general fund for that or look for donations from the community. I bet we could probably get donations from the community to fund this flag, it wouldn't be that expensive to go to Dick's or something like that and get them, depending on the size of the flag.
Well, I agree with Mike's, I think it needs to have at least the mermaid made Salado on it.
The mermaid?
Told you I'd touch your feeling. Uh, the thing that bothers me when I first look at it, is it's not proportional. The, uh, the blue is way too big, and the white, the red is way too small, and it looks like it's being flung backwards or something, so, I don't know, just a, just a one color flag or something would work for me.
Too much, the, the blue area is way too long.
Yeah.
Okay, let me get him to play with it.
I like the eye of the flag. And I say upfront money, we're talking about having a state, the village people, if they want one, your purchases.
Absolutely.
We should do that.
So you want me to tweak him a little bit?
As soon as he can, like, give us some options, too, 'cause like, we're, they were talking about, um, I'm kinda biased in support of Serena Fest, but Serena is kind of like our iconic symbol, you know? And like, having the S with the, the mermaid or something with, I like the creek, I like that piece of it, but the star is not really Salado.
You know the one thing it's missing? A salamander.
Put a little salamander in the creek.
Avery says get rid of the star and put an S in it.
Well, I think we've given you enough.
You have. It's a good closing note, but we'll, we'll get him to go back and play with the design a little bit and see what he can come up with.